For this day, thank you for your blessings upon us. Be with us in this troubled time. You can guide us and keep us, oh Lord, we pray. And bless our meeting tonight, that everything will be for your glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, out there in Zoom land. We've got one, two, three, four, five on the cameras out there. And then we have two council members here. And we're doing this video conference, the video council meeting. So I'll call the regular council meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is a consent agenda. We have a treasurer's report, approval of minutes on March 17th and March 24th, and approved payment of the bills. If we can have the treasurer's report, please. Probably have to say it loud unless you want to turn it up or something.
I'll say it loud.
Loud.
April 21st, 2020, treasurer's report. We have payable checks in the amount of $470,993.44. Seventeen checks of those payable checks are to major vendors, and that's 80% of the check balance, check value. And it's $376,807.67 for those 17 checks. Payroll is $150,699.84. Missouri Joint Municipal Electric is $252,70.65. We have five bond payments. The total of those bond payments is $63,691.58 for a whopping grand total payroll, payable checks, and bond payments of $937,455.51.
Okay. Get a motion to approve the consent agenda. John makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Linda, yes. John?
Yes, yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie? Hey, here's Reggie. Reggie? Take a seat up now. Reggie? Have we been in your mind for a while? Linda, I mean, Susan? Susan?
Yes. Yeah, there's a whole lot of feedback, so it's taking me a couple of seconds to answer you, but yes.
When Walter should go?
Yes.
Phone back. And Michael?
I start mapping.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Okay. Old new business tonight. Item 3-1, resolution designated April 18th, 2020, City of St. Robert Line Worker Appreciation Day. And I have that here, and sign in this, pass and approve on 21-day, 21st day of April, 2020. We also have a proclamation that I've signed already for Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is normally for April, and signed that today. And also, we have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month for April 11th through the month of April, which is a requirement that we have. So all those three proclamations are done. So we're down to 3.4. An ordinance authorizing the mayor enter into a modification of contract for the transfer station. Anita, anyone tell them what it's about?
This is an extent, a time extension on the transfer station with them bringing trash to the transfer station.
In a crisis situation?
In a crisis situation.
Okay, read it as a bill, please. 3.4.
Okay. I got it, excuse me a minute. Bill number 20054, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a modification of contract number W-911-S718-P0069 for the provision of transfer station services to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion.
Call roll, please.
Linda, yes. John?
Yes, yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, read it a second time, please.
Bill number 20-054, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a modification of contract number W-911-S718-P0064 for the provision of transfer station services to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Back end.
Reggie, second. Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3516, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a modification of contract number W-911-S718-P0069 for the provision of transfer station services to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion. John makes a motion, Linda second.
Discussion, call roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Item 3.5, ordinance reappointing individuals to the Liberty Commons Board of Directors. Read that as a bill, please.
Bill number 20055, ordinance of reappointing individuals to serve as members on the Board of Directors for the Liberty Commons Community Improvement District.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Teresa second. Clarification, discussion, call roll. Linda? Teresa? Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Second reading.
Bill number 20055, ordinance reappointing individuals to serve as members of the Board of Directors for the Liberty Commons Community Improvement District.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Todd?
Clarification, discussion, call roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Okay, read this book, or ordinance, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 3517, ordinance reappointing individuals to serve as members on the Board of Directors for the Liberty Commons Community Improvement District.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Motion.
Linda?
Linda makes a motion, Mike, it's clarification, discussion, call roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, 3.6, ordinance approving conditional use permit. This went to planning and zoning, and they want to do a airborne...
An Airbnb.
Airbnb, that's it. And went through planning and zoning, they approved it.
Did they have a town hall meeting on that or anything? I mean, how do the, do the people that live in those buildings?
Planning and zoning had a listing of everybody that he contacted through mail, and there was no response, nobody cared.
Nobody cared?
Yep, nobody cared. Yes.
Can I interject something real quick?
Go ahead.
I just, you know, I read that, and I'm kind of concerned with this because I think that in a, you know, when you buy a home in a subdivision, you're entitled to, you know, the privacy of you and your neighbors, not transient population, and that's kind of how I look at it. So I just, I don't have a real good feeling for this.
Didn't either. But they made a lot of stipulations on that, and we're going to see how it goes, I guess, because planning and zoning passed it, so.
Yeah, but that, there's a problem.
Do you think we should maybe still have a town hall meeting on it before we pass it?
The, our building code guy made a lot of stipulations, but the minutes on, that actually were passed, did not adopt. The building codes got a stipulation, didn't they?
He made a lot of recommendations, very specific recommendations, and the only...
He typed the minutes.
And I don't know, I mean, the minutes only said...
There was only one restriction in the minutes.
Oh, to get a business license, that's the only thing that was in the minutes. But there were, there were restrictions on parking and the right to revocate if they don't follow laws, and none of that was in the minutes.
Which is all part of our codes anyway.
Right. That's why Tice had me put in.
But the exceptions, the problem, the problem is, I think you should table this to your next meeting so that we can, they, planning and zoning can see whether those restrictions should be adopted because it looked to me like they intended to adopt those restrictions into the exception because the problem is, if they grant it, then they've granted a conditional use, which is one exception in there, and that's licensing, and there was a whole bunch of other stuff in there recommended.
Reggie said he can't hear you.
Yeah, what he's, what he's saying is Tice wants to table this till the next meeting. So Todd, will you make that motion? And it looks like...
Don't move.
Yeah.
Table this one.
Yes. John?
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa?
Also, I was at that meeting, and there were five stipulations that were stated, and we're not in any of this, so we need to go back and look at all that. So with that, my answer is yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Well, I have a question. If we say yes, is that setting a precedent that other people think we'll be able to set up businesses and we'll have to rezone everything?
We're just tabling this, Susan.
A little bit's lost in translation, so that's why I asked. So, yeah, okay.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, 3.7.
Ordinance approving proposal from Willard Asphalt for some paving on Lafayette Road. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 20057, ordinance approving proposal 7925 from Willard Asphalt for the extension of Lafayette Road.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Motion.
Who was that?
Call the roll, please.
Linda?
Yeah, how far down is that going on Lafayette?
About 100 feet.
Oh, so it's not going to do pretty much.
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Question. Can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Yeah, I, I just want to know, I've, I've seen these Willard contracts come through here before, and they're always seen to be, uh, added stuff to it once they get the contract. So I'm asking, when you get a contract like this, are sidewalks and curbs included in the initial road?
No, they're not. We're only paving the road over there, no curb sidewalks or anything. It's just a dirt road. Pardon?
Why would we build a road like that? I mean, is it going to a wilderness? So I'm, I'm not sure where it is.
It curbs and sidewalks and everything. It would cost us about $400,000 to do that over there. We're going to pave it, yeah, we're going to pave it so that they, they can have the roadway, and then when we got money, we can come back and put the others. It's part of the new area.
All right, I understand. All right. Yes.
Michael?
Second day of reading.
Okay. Second reading.
Bill number 20057, ordinance approving the proposal 7925 from Willard Asphalt for extension of Lafayette Road.
Okay. Todd makes a motion, you get a second. Walter seconds, clarification, discussion, call roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3519, an ordinance approving proposal 7925 from Willard Asphalt for the extension of Lafayette Road.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Okay, next one is 3.8. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2020 Ford F-250 trucks from Seller Sexton. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 20058, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2020 Ford F-250 trucks from Seller Sexton for the Public Works Department.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Todd makes a motion, Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
I have a question. Do we send these out for bid? I mean, do we send them to different?
It's through the government. It's a government contract, state contract.
Okay, because it seems like we always pick Seller Sexton.
That's because they have the lowest price.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it's on a government contract that's already been pre-bid. Call and roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number 20058, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2020 Ford F-250 trucks from Seller Sexton for the Public Works Department.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
As an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3520, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2020 Ford F-250 trucks from Seller Sexton for the Public Works Department.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion.
Motion.
Uh, who was that, Walter? Michael? Okay. Call and roll, please.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Okay, the next one is 3.9. It's a contract for a purchase of a generator. We've lost power at the fire station down there twice. We got some bids, this was the low bid, so that they can have power so they can get their doors open and let them get out of the bays down there. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 20059, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to contract with aesthetic electric for the purchase and installation of a generator.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Who was that, Todd and Reggie?
I think so.
Okay.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number 20059, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to contract with aesthetic electric for the purchase and installation of a generator.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, and who was second, Reggie? Got to call and roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3521, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to contract with aesthetic electric for the purchase and installation of a generator.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
John makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Linda? Yes. John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is 3.10. Anita worked on this. Anita, do you want to make any comments before we...
This, our contract with Waynesville expired in May for the animal control. This is for another five years, there's a 90-day out. It, the only real change in it, well, there isn't any. It does provide for signage.
They raised our fee $2,125.
They did do that.
That's a big change.
Well, their actual cost was more than that, so they're trying to, they just wanted to break even. We had 998 dogs they picked up, so...
In St. Robert?
Yes.
I still think we should have to put it...
So it's $22,000?
It's $27,000.
$27.
Well, it was 20.
$28,500.
$28.
Okay.
I still think we need to place signage.
So it's $28,000, we provided them Admin 2 for dogs. The pickup truck, we got back. They said it didn't run, all they did was jump it and it ran. And they're going to put a sign up.
They are going to put a sign up.
Page 2 of Exhibit A number 4 says, "Provide city of St. Robert signage for the animal shelter."
Yay.
Okay. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 20060, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an animal control and animal care contract between the city of St. Robert and the city of Waynesville.
Good. Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion.
Second.
John, second. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yeah, but quick question. How has this changed what we were doing before? Are we just providing a vehicle now, as well as what we were donating or paying per month or per quarter anyway? Or did I miss something? Because it looks like Waynesville is still going to be doing everything that they used to do, and we're just going to provide a vehicle, and that, was that correct?
No. They're going to do the same thing they've done in the past. We provided a vehicle before, but the service broke down.
Provide them a different one. We already, yeah, we provided a vehicle before. In fact, this is the third one we've gave them, so, okay.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty sixty, ordinance authorizing the merit to execute an animal control and animal care contract between the city of St. Robert and the city of Waynesville.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Todd.
Michael makes a motion, Todd seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, read us an ordinance please.
Ordinance number three five two two, ordinance authorizing the merit to execute an animal control and animal care contract between the city of St. Robert and the city of Waynesville.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance, John makes a motion.
Second.
Linda seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Three point eleven, ordinance authorizing the purchase of two Kubota zero-turn mowers. This is for the park and another one to replace a broken mower, or a mower that's worn out at the, uh, public works department.
Didn't we just buy a new mower last year?
Who? The park?
No.
Park was two thousand sixteen.
Right.
Yeah, and, uh, didn't hold up very good.
Well, I guess not.
Yeah.
Can fill a park.
Okay. Read us the bill please.
Bill number twenty oh six one, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two Kubota zero-turn motors, two canopies and two blade kits for the public works department.
Get a motion on the first reading. Todd makes a motion.
Motion.
Teresa seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John please.
An orange authorizing the purchase of two Kubota zero-turn motors, two canopies and two blade kits for the public horse department.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Todd makes a motion, Michael seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Read us an ordinance please.
Ordinance number three five two three, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two Kubota turn motors, mowers, two canopies and two blade kits for the public horse department.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Motion.
Todd seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The next one, uh, three point one two, is, uh, two transfer station trailers, uh, we haven't bought any in about four years, uh, we're down to nine, we normally have ten, so we went ahead and got two more, we got one that's probably gonna have to be taken off the road the next year, so, uh, we'll still end up at ten here by the end of the year.
Can we get rid of that big pistol they use to smash that stuff down in them trailers, then we can buy some firsts?
We're gonna need to buy a new loader with that new, uh, tight bucket that's got the long thing, so they can reach down there and, and push that stuff in, uh, and compress it.
That's a lot of money to spend on some.
And I should buy a hand.
Okay, read us the bill please.
I'm with you, Todd, that's a lot of money to have them tear them up like that.
Yeah.
Bill number twenty oh six two, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two two thousand twenty Stargate Durawall Tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
And you notice, we normally pay fifty-three thousand for these, they're now up to sixty-five thousand each, uh, so they've gone up significantly. Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, Michael seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes. Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty oh six two, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two twenty twenty Stargate Durawall Tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
John makes a motion, Todd seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Is an ordinance please.
Ordinance number thirty five twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two twenty twenty Stargate Durawall Tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Todd seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
Todd?
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes. Yes.
Susan? Susan? Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, three point one three, is a, uh, a, a agreement at the post, uh, for the airport. Read us the bill please.
Bill number twenty oh six three, an orange authorizing the merit to enter into Missouri highways and transportation commission, first supplemental agreement to airport aid agreement, object project number one nine six oh five seven B dash one for year two thousand twenty.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion.
Second.
John seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading please.
Bill number twenty oh six three, an orange authorizing the merit to enter into Missouri highways and transportation commission, first supplemental agreement to airport and agreement, project number one nine six oh five seven B dash one for year two thousand twenty.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Teresa seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number thirty five twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the merit to enter into Missouri highways and transportation commission, first supplemental agreement to airport and agreement project number one nine six oh five seven B dash one for year two thousand twenty.
Okay, get a motion on the reading of the ordinance, Teresa makes a motion. John seconds clarification discussion, call the roll please.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd? Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, three one four, uh, ordinance granting the mayor discretion to negotiate, uh, for a, uh, the AT&T tower stuff down there with, uh, Millers, or IOU, I guess it is, yes, you wanna explain that?
Yes, uh, the Millers back in the nineties purchased the road right away from Mo Dog, I think they purchased it from Ray Adams, actually.
Right.
They have the cusp over the, uh, running along the highway up there on old Route sixty-six, cusp around the city's land, they got a cup around there, and, uh, we, with the AT&T tower, need an easement, um, right beside Taco Bell there, for us to utilize for our purposes and for AT&T to utilize. Judy, we've been talking with Judy Redman, who is Judy Miller, really, and Joe Miller, of course, is in the nineties, late nineties, but he's still sharp, so, uh, we've been working with AT&T, Archer, and we had a meeting down there this morning, uh, or yesterday, was it?
Yesterday, yes.
Yesterday. So we reached an agreement, but we need to put it to pieces and we need to get something down, done now, 'cause AT&T wants to get in there and start building. So what we've done is a little unusual, we've given the mayor forward authority to negotiate the contract, negotiate the deeds, and bind the city on those contracts, we very seldom would do that, but in this case, um, it's something we need to do, the basic agreement is, they're gonna supply us with an easement, the mayor, now, I probably need to write this down on the calendar, the mayor was right and I was wrong. Uh, on, on where the property line went, because I thought it went down to the basest hill, it only went down halfway, but we still need to get an easement from them. Uh, we've reached a, a deal with the Millers and the mayor negotiated with Judy today.
And the trees are down already?
The trees are down and we're gonna put some fill in there, and, uh, we've agreed that, of course, they would have it anyway, we have a road coming down from the swimming pool that runs right along their property line, uh, if they have a commercial, or run a, a commercial customer or purchaser, we're gonna grieve to a commercial easement, if there's some space between, um, their land and the road, we'll give them an easement over that, but they have to build the driveway and it has to come to the standards of our road, so, i- if we're coming on the road, we'd have to give it to them anyway, but we would, if they wanted, say, had a Starbucks come in, just as a sample or something like that, then they'd have the right to build, if we had ten feet or fifteen feet there between a roadway and their land, they would have the right to build over our few feet there and pu- and do an entrance into their land. Otherwise, uh, there were some issues about some signs and stuff, but basically Judy and the mayor have negotiated, so it's an unusual, uh, ordinance, it gives the mayor discretion, but I think we've got everything finalized, but it's gonna be, because I think we all are tired of our phones dropping calls, so having an ATT tower in there is gonna be something we're all gonna benefit from, we also have sold that five acres up there for the soccer field, so we're gonna have to be able to get in there now anyway, so this is just something for the growth of the city, it's unusual, we wouldn't usually duplicate it, but, um, I think we can trust the mayor to get an easement done.
Well, we were out there yesterday afternoon finishing this up, so, but, yeah, they, uh, they got out there today and knocked the trees down, if you haven't been by Taco Bell, uh, go by Taco Bell and, and see the trees are down, stakes are all out there, so you can see what this is. Basically, uh, uh, the AT&T hundred, hundred by hundred site and everything is all getting plotted in there, so.
Yeah, we, uh, AT&T sent a corrected easement today, and I sent it over to Sylvester at Archer, so that he can coordinate it, make sure, and then we'll start getting the easements done.
Didn't, didn't we already agree to an amount that they would be paying us though, right?
Yes.
So all we're gonna be negotiating is the, the land, the, the, um.
The easement across there, and we've gotta build, we gotta do some earthwork, uh, to get the hundred by hundred AT&T site.
We have to get an easement from Millers, we have to give an easement, we have to give an easement back to the Millers so they can drive over to their land.
Right.
A little curlicue, we have to give an easement to A and T, AT&T. And so those legals all have to be established and those will be done as soon as we can, and otherwise, it's not a big deal.
Okay, read us the bill please.
Bill number twenty oh six four, ordinance granting the mayor discretion to negotiate agreements and conveyance with IOU Incorporated to execute the documents and legally bind the city to that, by that execution.
Yeah, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Todd makes a motion, John seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number twenty oh six four, ordinance granting the mayor discretion to negotiate agreements and advances with IOU Incorporated to execute the documents and legally bind the city by that execution.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda, Linda makes a motion, Teresa seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty five twenty-six, ordinance granting the mayor discretion to negotiate agreements and conveyance with IOU Incorporated to execute the documents and legally bind the city by that execution.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, uh, Reggie seconds clarification discussion, call the roll.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next committee meetings, uh, we don't need to finance yet, we got the auditors came, did the initial, when are they coming back?
Um, apparently, um, we're gonna be doing everything remotely, they have not been released to come on site, uh, their, uh, employers, so we're gonna be doing a lot, we're gonna be, they are going to reschedule two days to come down, but later, uh, uh, maybe.
Okay. Okay, public works, Steve's not here, emergency services, par- park committee?
They won't meet.
Really? What happened on Wednesday?
Well, they're not having the barbecue till the September eleventh and twelve, so our weekly meetings have, you know.
Okay, comments by Alderman, Teresa? Nothing?
I think, I think we need to kinda work on the volume with different things, uh, with individuals, or, we need to kinda work on, uh, volumes, microphones, background, all that, but other than that, nothing.
I'm good, sir.
Okay, Reggie?
I'm good.
Susan?
Yeah, what Teresa said, I was having, uh, there was a lot of noise in the background and I'm on my computer and on my phone, so, um, otherwise, it was good, uh, but I lost a lo- a lot of, a, a little bit of what's, you guys were saying, because the microphones.
Yes, I can. Hey, Walter?
Yes, was your question on, uh, meeting tonight, uh, did it go? I didn't hear the question.
Did I just, Alderman comments, get any comments?
No comments? Uh, yeah, I just wanna, and so, is this possible for us to do another spring pickup?
Got some stuff, or, yeah, people have some stuff for us?
Okay, I didn't quite hear your answer.
Do you wanna, if you have people that want a pickup? Is it your neighborhood?
Uh, no, I would, well, I was just speaking in general, I thought we kinda got, it kinda flaming with real, you know, so, and so I, I was just wondering.
Yeah, Tom, uh, had to get everything out of the city, so a lot of people, you know, or just wanted, we can do special pickups.
Okay, let me ask you also, uh, you put out that well, number four went down, but did it ever get back up, w- was it up within?
Yes. Yes, it's back up.
Michael?
I have nothing.
How's it going?
Yes. I have seen a lot of dogs at our dog park, a lot of dogs down there.
Yeah.
Yes, and I always stop when I see people and say, what would you like to see here, you know, what?
Okay, good.
What would make it better for you, and so, of course, they said benches to sit on.
Right.
And one woman said, uh, cup, a platform or something, you know, for the dog to climb up on, I know Steve plans on, or at least he told me, putting like some kind of tunnel-like thing in there, like a PVC valve thing or something in there, so the sooner we can get those things in, the better, but people are enjoying it, I ask them, you know, are you, are you enjoying it, and they're like, yeah, we really like it, so, and I have something else, but I don't know if I have to wait till closed.
We're not having closed, because we're video.
Remember when we talked about that?
Yeah, we can talk to Tyce after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, with that, where are we at? We over to city clerk, the finance officer.
Um, the April seventieth elections were, were rescheduled for June the second, is election day.
Okay.
Okay. Reporting taxable sales in the city, um, through the month of April. Reported taxable sales in the city through April is eighty-two million, five hundred and five thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. We did note a small decrease in April's collection, um, about seven, we're down seven point two-two percent, which is February sales. So hopefully, when we see May's sales tax, that goes back up.
Okay, so we're down on the year seven percent?
That's just for the month of April. Altogether, we have a one point seventy-three, one point seventy-three percent increase for the year.
Did everybody hear that? We got a one point seven-three increase for the first four months of the year, although we are down for April, so. That's better than the seven percent we were down last month.
I did, you know, to you, the recap for our utility billing, you should have that. Um, I think we did very well, um, with the suspension of shut-off or disconnects and not charging penalties. So we view that, please, if you have any questions, just give us a call. Al-also, the operating account stands at three point seven million after today's payment of the bills, payroll, and bond payment.
Three point seven, okay. Okay. Did everybody hear that? Three point seven million after the million we're spending tonight?
In the checking account, yes, operating.
Okay. Okay, go on down through, city attorney, anything?
Couple of things, uh, the, I got something in closed session, but Osage, we have fenced the burial sites and the fences, from what I've seen, look excellent. So we're now prepared to send them pictures of the fences, and I'm going to prepare the deeds in the next couple of days for the city to the Osage Indian Nation. Uh, they have not yet checked the other site to see whether it's on our land or somebody else's. If it's on ours, we'll deed that them also. Uh, so that should be a closed ledger for us and, uh, thank goodness. Uh, and basically, I guess that's about all I have that's not for closed session.
Okay. Anita?
Um, I've just got a few things tonight. Census twenty-twenty, our county's behind. Our percentage is thirty-seven point nine percent, so I encourage
Thirty-two in the city.
Yes, so I encourage everybody to go online and fill out the census. It just takes a minute. I visited with, we also signed up for FEMA forty-four ninety, the CAT-B, which is an emergency part, um, for reimbursement, and this one will be done all online. We won't have actual FEMA people that'll come meet with us and visit, um, and we'll submit everything on the portal like we do now. The
And what is that for?
That's for the COVID virus.
Oh, okay.
Uh, an update on Saint Robert Boulevard, uh, the engineer received comments back from MoDOT, and, um, they have answered them and they're working on their final design, Jeff said. We, uh, on the street lighting project, they're doing directional drilling. The water project, we've been getting ready for a closeout, um, but they're going to try to put another little project in there if, um, we're allowed to. Lifeguards, we've got six hired, um, just in case we get to move forward with that. We need six more. Transfer station tonnage for March was four point two compared to three point three in, uh, February, so it's up. The treatment plant, uh, they're getting ready for, uh, contract number two, which is the mass grading. They've been doing some drilling and they're waiting for the results back from that. Um, and that's about it, mayor.
Okay. Okay, I've got a few things. Just wanted to let you know on the ladder truck. It was supposed to be delivered this month. It is now being pushed back to July. Uh, they got everything together. They went to test the ladder and put it up at a hundred and seven feet, and I guess it broke the steel.
Oh, no.
Was not manufactured correctly, so they've got to wait. It'll be, uh, mid-June before the new steel comes in to put the ladder together. And, uh, so we will not get the ladder truck until July at this point.
Wow.
Is there anything in the contract, if they can't deliver by a certain date, that they knock money off of that?
You can check that out. Good point, Todd. But, uh, they were supposed to, uh, the chief was supposed to go back up there, uh, I think it was next week, and, uh, got the call, uh, that that had happened, so, uh, we're just kind of waiting on that. But, yeah, we can check that out with the contract, see what we got. Sure Tyce can look at it.
I don't remember it, but I will. Thanks for the additional work, Todd. I appreciate it.
I'm just saying how often that, that occurs for that ladder to collapse.
They said it was bad steel itself. The steel that it was made from, uh, was no good or something. I don't know. Uh, I'm sure it was new, but it evidently, uh, wasn't mixed or did something when they made the steel, so.
Yeah. Then, then, mayor, is, is there a statute of limitation if, if an accident occurs with that ladder?
Well, they're, they're not giving it to us. They're going to make a new ladder.
Well, I think he's asking the question, what kind of warranty we have?
Oh, yeah.
In case of failure. Uh, the, the warranties period under the UCC is four years. Uh, well, when I'm checking the contract, good point, I'll check the warranty on all the parts and the, the machines, too. And I'll see what kind of warranty we have. I think that's a secondary.
Yeah, it's a custom cab. It's not a
Because I think we need to check the warranty now, too. So is that what you're talking about, Walter?
Yeah.
Right, I'll, I'll check for The price and the delivery date and the warning.
Okay. Okay, I had sent out a text. I got four responses that were for it. Uh, had, had been wondering, because we got a request to, uh, implement anybody that goes into Walmart or Lowe's or any of the big box stores to be wearing face protection. Uh, I only got four responses, uh, and kind of let it go, because everything seems to be changing day by day. Walmart employees yesterday went to mask on all their employees, uh, talked to the Lowe's manager, uh, and Walmart last week, and, uh, we can do an ordinance and they'll comply with it if we want. Uh, but with the governor saying he's going to come out of this on May fourth, I'm just wondering where we ought to be on that and was just trying to get your opinion on that. Anybody got any comments or thoughts on that?
Mayor, I'll, I'll email you some more or text you some more on that, but I think we kind of need to stay away from that if we're singling out two businesses.
Yeah, that's what I felt, too. And it's, it's people from all over the county and and, uh, everybody else also, so, yeah.
The governor preempts us, so we just follow his lead, and I think Todd's right per se.
Yeah.
In terms of our actions. He may be wrong, but, you know.
Yeah, I was just trying to get everybody's opinion. It sounded like it was kind of split, so, uh, but everything seems to be changing. Um, we do have thirty-one, uh, positive cases in the county at this point, and, uh, we don't believe there's community spread, is the latest I got. Uh, I was on a call, uh, they've got a new thing with the general, uh, on post, and we're doing a weekly call on Monday afternoons, and we've got, uh, several people on there, and it was very good discussion, and, uh, so I think we're moving ahead. So, the last thing is May fourth. Uh, I brought up about May fourth. Uh, Gene Newkirk is going to have a meeting this Thursday to talk about how do we open back up, if the governor allows that on May fourth and what we'll do locally. And, uh, I'll text you , uh, probably Thursday afternoon after that meeting, uh, to let you know, uh, if we're going to move forward. The only thing is, the governor today on this news thing, I watch that every day, uh, said that, uh, Friday he was going to have the results. So I don't know if Gene will move his meeting or not. So hopefully, uh, we're less than two weeks away from some, uh, opening up, uh, but we'll have to wait and see what the governor says. There's still a lot of issues with testing, because we haven't had testing, and, uh, we've been working that issue. I've been working that with some other people. And, uh, so hopefully in the next couple of days, we'll get some word on that. Um, and I said, uh, take a look at Taco Bell. They did a fantastic job in one day's work over there. Uh, they got some more work to do. They'll be there probably a week, but rain tomorrow and rain Friday will probably slow them up.
Mayor, there was one thing I had.
Yes, we got an alibi from Tyce.
Yeah, uh, this is not part of my city. We, uh, executed and turned over the building of the old Miller's drill, uh, to the marijuana folks Friday, last Friday. Uh, so, uh, that will be, they're going to renovate that and, uh,
The old Denny's.
Huh?
The old Denny's building.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that will give us, you know, another business in town.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay. Okay. With that, get a motion to go into closed sessions.
Motion.
We have a session on that, Tyce?
What?
We have closed session on that, right?
If they're not secured, can we have closed session?
On what, on the deal with the nine-one-ones, what I want.
Video conference, yeah.
No, we're talking about with Zoom. Uh? Can we, can we do it by video? Yes. Yes.
Who was that made the motion in there? Walter made it?
Made it. In a second. Teresa seconds. Over and over.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Susan?
What am I, green chip? What am I, green chip?
Walter?
Yes.
And Mike? Who said
Yeah.
Oh, too close, I think.
Nothing, John. Boy, you close, Susan.
Susan, Ken West, and I don't think she's
Because we can't see.
Okay, just hang on while the cameras are taken down. Thank you.